Let's call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, February 24th, 2025, and the time is 6:00 PM. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome, members of the community here tonight, to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. Dr. Hellen, we have some items in the table file. Will you update us?
Yes, we have several items in the table file. Under the consent agenda, we have some appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignment, and a couple of leaves of absences. And then, under items for individual action, we have the details related to the general obligations, school building bonds, series 2025A issuance. And we're very pleased to share some good news with that as part of that report. So that's a very large file. You had received the template before the bond sale. The bond sale happened today. And now you have all of the other detailed information that accompanies that.
Good. Thank you. If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Board members, make sure your mic is on so that we can record your votes. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? Move by Jeff, second.
Second.
By Corey. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. We're at the public comment portion of our agenda. Do we have anybody signed up? Okay, then we will move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hellen?
Yes, I have several this evening. First, we want to congratulate the amazing work that our Northfield FFA chapter continues to do. For the first time in over thirty-five years since bringing FFA back to Northfield, we have two FFA state degree participants, or excuse me, recipients, Keith Harner and Macy Mueller. Macy earned first place in the Entrepreneurship Proficiency Poultry Production Program. We also have Hector Villanueva, who was named the 2526 Region Seven Sentinel, and Josh Keenan, who was named the Northfield FFA Chapter Regional Delegate. And these distinctions were asked after a robust application process and interviews during the Region Leadership Day on February 7th. So, you know, the FFA program has been back for a short time and really is flourishing even in its early stages. So we're so grateful to TJ Austin, their director, and the students who are leading that program. We are incredibly proud to announce that Northfield High School senior Soren Powers was advanced to finalist standing in the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program. This is a very small percentage of people nationally who are involved in that program, who reach National Merit finalist status. So congratulations to Soren, and we look forward to hearing about the scholarship board that will accompany that in March. Our wrestlers had an excellent section, individual section championships. So we'd like to congratulate Ella Pagel and Callie Graber, who will advance, who have advanced to the state wrestling competition after earning first place in the sectional girls wrestling meet. And then we want to congratulate Charlie Johnson, Keith Harner, Kayden Staub, Sam Harner, Zane Engels, Owen Murphy, and Ryan Kuiper, all who advanced to the state boys wrestling meet. And we want to congratulate all of these wrestlers on taking their talents to the next level here in just a week or so. Finally, this week, February 24th through the 28th, is Public Schools Week. And Public Schools Week celebrates the role that public education plays in shaping the future of our children, our community, and our future. This week is dedicated to honoring the incredible teachers and staff who work tirelessly to ensure every student has the academic, social, and emotional support they need to thrive. So we hope that the entire community, if you know an educator, would you please make sure that you thank them for the work that they're doing to prepare every student for lifelong success? And so we celebrate public schools, not only this week, but all of the time here in Northfield, but a little bit more this week. So those are your announcements for tonight.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any announcements or recognitions? Okay. Item five is our items for discussion and reports, and we have one item, Priority-Based Budget Reduction Process Updates. Superintendent Hellen and Director of Finance Val Murdestorf will update the board about the priority-based budget reduction process.
So we won't spend a tremendous amount of time this evening on this, but we do want to recognize that people come to our budget reduction discussion at different times. So we just want to highlight a couple of things. Our Priority-Based Budget Committee met for the second time last Tuesday. There's a total of eighty-five people involved in that. That includes around sixty-five staff members, community members without children, parents, and students. We have a number of students from the District Youth Council on our teams. And so they have gone through two meetings where they became grounded in the budget. Last week, they really dug into the hard work, uncomfortable work of discussing what potential reductions would be part of their preliminary proposal. Tomorrow night is their final meeting. They've been meeting for two and a half hours apiece. Tomorrow night, they will gather in their budget reduction teams to come to consensus on what are the preliminary proposals that they're going to put forward. Then the teams will all come together to be able to hear a report from each of the other teams about the things that they are proposing. So of course, after that, what will happen is the administration will take those ideas, and we will formalize them into what would be budget reductions. The teams aren't charged with that. They're charged with the ideas, and then administration will formalize those proposed reductions. We will share those with the community ahead of the March 11th community meeting, where people will have a chance to hear a presentation about the proposed reductions. They'll have some breakout rooms where they'll be with board members and administrators so that they are able to share their perspectives. We'll come back to the auditorium in a public style, a public comment style session. People will have three minutes apiece if they would like to speak in front of the entire assembly. And of course, then the board will hear the recommendations formally at the April 14th meeting, and will ask that you approve the reductions at the April 28th meeting. And I do think it's important just to make sure that we ground people in some of the reasons that we're bringing these pieces forward. So I just have a couple of slides I want to show, just for people who are new to this conversation. So the first piece that I want to share is around the per pupil basic formula. So you've seen this chart before, but I think it's important for people to see these operational charts. And so this is the basic formula. The blue is what the formula would have been had the legislature approved increases just to match inflation over the last twenty years. The red line, the red dotted line, is what the legislature actually approved. And so for the formula today to have the same buying power that it did in 2003, the legislature would have to improve an increase of $1,364 per pupil. And so for the Northfield School District, if they had just kept up with inflation for the last twenty years, that means we'd have an additional $5.7 million in revenue, which is not so coincidentally nearly what we are talking about reducing. So a key part of this has been state funding lagging inflation over the years. Also, I want to just remind folks that there's the power of that formula, because just under seventy percent of our revenue is from the state, and seventy percent of that revenue is based on enrollment-based formulas. So, for example, you know, we are seeing probably above, technically, a little bit more than four percent increase from the state this coming year, but because of declining enrollment, we're only realizing point eight percent in new revenue. So that, we have the double whammy of that the state has not kept up with inflation as it relates to the formula, and having fewer students just erodes the power of any increase that the legislature does. We also want to just remind folks that when we talk about our budget, most schools in Minnesota, you have around eighty percent of your budget as personnel salary and benefits. In this slide, which you've seen before, it's the blue and the orange. And so when we talk about reducing the budget, it is very difficult to make the kinds of reductions that we're talking about by reducing copy paper and other supplies. We hire good people to do good things for kids, and when eighty percent of your budget is personnel, the only way that you're going to be able to really reduce the budget in kind is going to be through those personnel reductions. So we've just been very transparent about that, that when we talk about reducing the budget, it does mean positions. I also wanted to show this slide about our ongoing incremental declining enrollment. So you'll see the chart here. It is not a mass of people leaving in any one year. It is an average of point nine-three percent fewer students each year over the next six years. And then the final slide that I want to show is this one that relates to some things we're going to talk about tonight. So you've heard us talk before about Minnesota school finance being amongst the most highly regulated in the country. And sometimes, we really get genuine, genuine heartwarming and good ideas about ways that we could work on the budget. But because of the rules and regulations that we face, they're not always doable. And so, for example, tonight, we are going to talk about the first bond sale related to the 2024 Reimagine Northfield High School Bond Referendum. And there will be some people who will say, well, you know, why can't we use that money to backfill the operational budget? We just aren't allowed to. As we remember, bonds are for building, and levies are for learning. And you see the column here that is debt service. When we pass a bond referendum, the property owners are taxed. That money comes to the school district and turns right around, and it pays what is our equivalent of a mortgage. It's an in and an out, and never shall the two meet. You are not allowed to use debt service money for anything but paying our equivalent of a mortgage. You know, we've also heard people ask about some of the other facilities that we lease, you know, the Dundas Dome or the Gymnastics Center or the ICE Arena, and wondering how that plays into this. And that is in the general fund restricted category. So again, we determine what those leases are going to cost us. The board approves that as part of the annual levy, preliminary levy in September, and then the levy in December. And that money comes into the district, and then we turn right around and use it to pay for those lease costs. And so it's important for folks to understand. We've had, even had a few people who say, you know, you've got some really great kitchen staff working. Maybe they could be more efficient. Maybe we could do all of the cooking in one kitchen, you know, and save some of those dollars. But again, that's all food service costs, which we can't use to support the unrestricted general fund. So I think it's just important to keep grounding us in what I call the walled gardens of Minnesota school finance. So we're very pleased to have so many people having stepped forward. People really are genuinely engaged in these meetings, trying to find ideas that will help. It is, it is actually quite heartwarming. As difficult as the discussions are, people are coming forward in a very genuine way, wanting to help. And I think that is really representative of what this process has been over the past twenty years, and how Northfielders just show up and try to help solve the problems that are ahead of us. So that is the report that I have on the Priority-Based Budget Reduction Process tonight. Val has done excellent work, giving people lots of answers to questions about data and what things cost, etc. Do you want to add anything tonight? So that is, we just want to give that brief report. We'd be happy to answer any questions that board members have about the Priority-Based Budget Reduction Committee. It is, there's nothing good about it, right? We wish we did not have to do that. Everything that we offer has value to people, and so the things that we're talking about are very difficult.
Okay, Corey?
Dr. Hellen, would that initial proposal be shared with the board at the March 11th meeting, or will we see it beforehand?
You will see it beforehand. We will obviously do our typical cascading communication. So once the administration has taken those ideas and we have formalized them, we will make sure that the board sees it first. And then after the board and our leadership team see it, then we'll make sure that staff see it. And then we will release it to the larger community as well, just within a, within a day of, everyone will receive it within a day or so of each other. But we want people to have that information ahead of the March 11th community meeting.
So do you anticipate that might be this week or next week?
Yeah, I'm not going to give you a date, because I've learned in the past about giving people dates. But what I would anticipate is at least, you know, around six or seven days ahead of time.
Anyone else question or comment? Maggie?
For people who are learning about kind of the impact that the state has on our funding situation, is there a way that they might be able to get involved and kind of take a role, a more active role in asking for more funding from the state?
I'm happy that you asked that. We have a really strong Legislative Action Committee that meets via Zoom every other Saturday. We just had a meeting this last Saturday. I think Claudia is the board rep on that. I think we probably had a dozen people there on Saturday. And so if people are interested, they could certainly join the Legislative Action Committee. They can do so just by emailing myself or Kelly Spillman-Cramer in our office. We will put them on the list. It is really a low entry point. You get the, you'll be emailed the agenda and the Zoom link, and there are people who show up every week. There are people who show up every other week or just a few times. Each week, we teach a little bit about where the legislature is at in the process right now, and then we have a call to action. So for example, this week, the call to action was for them to actually call our legislators and some of the legislators on the education finance committees, asking for an additional three percent on the per pupil basic formula, and to continue working on closing the special education cross subsidy.
Anyone else question or comment? Thank you very much. Item six is our committee reports. We have a report from Board Member Corey Butler. The report is for SIFSEC, and it's in the packet. Corey, would you like to speak on the report or let it stand?
I will let it stand.
Item seven is our consent agenda. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to this consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration?
Thank you, Claudia. I would like to remove item 7B for separate consideration.
Let me find that first. Say that number again.
7B.
Okay, we can remove that item, and so... Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping once we've removed this item 7B Policy 522? Move by Jenny, second. By Jeff, okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion passes. We will add 7B. Let's see. Okay, we will add that to our items for individual action. Is that, am I doing that right?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, that will be our items for individual action, item F. We have several items tonight. One of them is a resolution. And again, board members, make sure your mic is on. I'm sorry. We approve the consent agenda minus item. So we can remove the item, and then we approve the consent agenda without the item, but do we need to vote on removing the item?
Nope, because any board member can choose to remove something from the consent agenda. And then, once the rest of the consent is, consent agenda is approved, we just move that item to the items for individual action.
Okay, thank you.
And Kelly, you got what you need for the, great.
All right, our first item is 2025-2026 Operating Capital and Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Budget. Revenues and expenditures are detailed in the memorandum, and the board heard a detailed presentation at our last meeting. This memorandum and supporting documents are published as part of the board packet and are accessible to the public from our district website. I move to approve the 2025-2026 Operating Capital and Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Budgets as detailed in the memorandum. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Maggie. Is there any discussion on this item 8A? Nope. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Right, motion passes. Next, we have Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Tenure and Indoor Air Quality Management Plan. Is there a motion to approve the Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Tenure Plan and Indoor Quality Management Plan?
Moved.
Move by Corey. Okay, second. By Jenny, thank you. Is there any discussion on item B? None? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have a resolution, and so Kelly will help take a roll call vote on that. The resolution is relating to the $39 million General Obligations School Building Bonds Series 2025A. The bond sale took place today, February 24th. The sale, the sale day report and final resolution and the supporting documents are in the table file. Is there a motion to approve the resolution relating to $39 million General Obligations School Building Bonds Series 2025A authorizing issuance, awarding sale, prescribing the form and details, and providing for the payment thereof?
So moved.
Move by Corey, second.
I didn't, I had a question.
So we're going to take a motion first, and then we can have discussion. Can I have a second on this motion? Okay, by Jeff, thank you. Okay, Jeff, you have a comment?
Yeah, I was wondering, did you get it? I mean, I didn't see that in thought. Was it interest rate?
Yeah, well, we're thrilled to share the interest rate. So in fact, I might ask, may I ask Shelby McQuay from Ellers to come forward? It's quite thrilling.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Yeah, we sold bonds this morning for Northfield and great results. So you have in your packets probably the, the sale day report. So pre-election, we were anticipating five percent. So we ensured that, you know, we went to the voters and we were characterizing the tax impact at sort of that upper limit. And the results of the sale today were 3.97. So pre-sale report that Jeff presented last month was a little, like 4.38. And so we were anticipating a better, better interest rate than we anticipated at the time of the pre-election. And then, of course, the results come in better than that, which is great news. So just kind of a little bit, you know, a little more comprehension of the, of the sale today. So we just sold a portion. Your full authority was approximately $120 million. We sold $39 million today, and that will get you started and move along the, the construction so that you'll have funds available for the first portion of the construction, and then you'll be able to have some flexibility when we sell the remainder of the 80 million. Of course, taking into account the $2 million donation that the district is receiving by borrowing less than the full authority given by the voters, because that came in as part of the process of the election. So you'll have those funds available on March 20th. And overall, what that lower interest rate means on this portion of the bond is about $8 million in savings relative to where we anticipated. And of course, we're spreading out the entire payback period over 25 years, and we have one more bond sale to go. So we're taking all of this in stride, making sure that we're setting up the taxpayers for the long term and not, you know, not capturing all those savings on a lower tax impact right now. We want to make sure over the life of the bond, we're paying off that principal that we need to get paid off and lowering the overall borrowing amount, or the overall principal and interest costs. So the winning bidder was bared. We anticipated, we opened up the bid this morning with seven bidders, and you, you received more than that at about thirteen, thirteen bidders. The winning bidder was bared out of Wisconsin, but national attention on Northfield, New York, Milwaukee, Chicago, Florida, and Dallas were among the bidders, including North Carolina. That's where Wells Fargo is based, and then JP Morgan and Jefferies were the, the final bidders on the sale. So you do have more than anticipated going to your project fund as well, the way we're starting off. So you'll be able to be able to invest those funds right away as well and start to earn interest. And all the interest earnings will be able to go towards the, the project cost as well. So I have a series of materials in the, the sale day, and one of those is the, the rating report. So Dr. Hellen and Val participated in the rating call, and that was really, really helpful to be able to go into S&amp;P, especially given their new methodology, to be able to talk succinctly about where the district is at, where the budget cuts are coming in, what the anticipated path forward is for Northfield as you take on this additional debt. So they, with the new methodology, you're at that double A rating, so a nice solid rating to stay in, in those categories. So all of that material is detailed out in the sale day report, and I'm happy to answer anything on that, the resolution itself, or any other questions you have going forward with this. This is the starting point of the plan, so.
Fantastic. Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
If I can just, you know, when we were sharing the information about the referendum during the informational campaign, all of the documents we were showing was at a five percent estimated interest. So coming in at 3.97 percent on this first issuance is a really big deal for our taxpayers. And I think it continues to go that, you know, we continue to try to be as sharp as we can so that we are coming, delivering on our promises to our community. So I'm really pleased with the sale that we had today. We hope for another positive sale in, when we bring that back in a couple of years, but this is a really great start to this bond referendum.
Thank you so much. Okay, seeing no more discussion, we will take a vote. Kelly, will you facilitate that?
Butler?
Aye.
Epstein?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Gonzalez, George?
Aye. Okay, motion passes.
Item D is our change order procedures for the Northfield High School Reimagine Project. The board is requested to adopt the change order limits initially presented at the February 10th, 2025 board meeting for the project associated with the November 5th, 2024 bond referendum, and also detailed in this packets memorandum. I'll take a motion first, and then we can discuss. There are lots of details in the memo, and we can take questions and comments on those. Is there a motion to adopt change order limits for the Reimagine Northfield High School Project associated with the November 5th, 2024 bond referendum as presented? Okay, move by Jenny. Can I get a second? And by Maggie, thank you. Is there any discussion for this item? Questions or comment? Jeff?
I think you just, you called that a tiering, a little bit of tiering on that. I think we kind of talked about that.
Yeah, I think that's exactly the way to put it, Jeff. So administrative authority, that would be Val Murdestorf, Justin Robbely, and myself. So Director Finance, Director of Buildings and Grounds, Superintendent could approve if we all agree on a change order, if it's less than $100,000. Anything that would be between $100 and $175,000, the Project Oversight Committee, of which you're represented by Claudia, Corey, and Ben, could approve that. And then anything above $175,000, the full board would approve. And anytime that the administration or the project oversight team approves a change order, we would report it to you at the next board meeting.
Good. Anyone else question or comment? Moving right along. Okay, item E, Policy Committee Recommendations. Is there a motion to approve the Policy Committee's recommended updates to policies 406, 407, 408, 519, 614, and 701.9? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, we did the resolution, and then I didn't vote, didn't have you vote on item D. Apologies for that. Okay, we do have a motion moved by Jenny and seconded by Maggie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you for that. Okay, now we're on to item E, Policy Committee Recommendations. Is there a motion to approve the Policy Committee's recommended updates to the policies detailed in the memorandum?
So moved.
Move by Corey, second. Second by Jeff, thank you. Is there any discussion questions on any of the policies? All right. No more discussion, then we will go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next, we have item F, which is an item pulled from the consent agenda. It is Policy 522 Title IX Sex Non-Discrimination Policy Grievance Procedure and Process. Administration recommends reverting Policy 522 to the 2022 version. This action will align the district's policy with the 2020 Title IX rules to comply with the January 2025 federal court ruling that vacated the 2024 Title IX rules. Okay, so we'll open that up for discussion. And Jenny, do you want to?
Thank you. I have just two kind of technical questions, most likely for Dr. Hellen or I guess anyone else that is able to answer. First question is, will the same policy statement found in the Title IX Discrimination Report Form that accompanies that policy be revised also?
So any accompanying documents to the policy would revert back to a similar document that would be with the previous policy? So we approve the policy. If there's any associated documents, like a complaint form, I think is what you're talking about?
Yes.
That would revert back to whatever the complaint form had been as part of the previous policy as well. And Jenny, I have to tell you, I'm not even sure we had a complaint form before, so I'll just go back and double check that.
It is one form that serves both Policy 522 and 413?
Sure, that makes sense, yep.
Okay, so there is a form.
There, there is a form that we use for that. Now, I don't recall. We'll go back and double check that typically as a procedural piece. But my recollection would have been that that form would have not changed a tremendous amount, because I don't think it, it, I have to go back and look at the form. But we will make sure it aligns with the reverting to the policy that we're asking to revert to tonight.
Okay, because I, I don't want to approve a policy if it's going to directly contradict, you know, with the same statement in, in the set in the list, you know, on the report form.
Right, and so what we do with any procedural piece like a complaint form, when the policy is changed, we will update it to align with the new policy.
And then, will that be the same process for the areas in the Student Citizenship Handbook that, that will refer to Policy 522, because there you're going to see the same contradictions unless those are also revised?
Yes, so this would be the beginning of that, and we'll have to check in terms of, I don't recall. Or did you see a difference between the previous Student Citizenship Handbook and the current one?
Yes.
You did, okay.
There's direct contradictions then to this, this proposed policy.
Once we approve the policy, then that takes... Once we approve the policy, then that takes the next steps of approving any other correlating documents.
And then, will those approvals come to us for a discussion as a board, or will they automatically just revert?
The complaint form would not, because that's a procedural document. So, procedural documents tend to, administration has the ability to just update those. The Student Citizenship Handbook likely will have to come back for an update.
Back to the board.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I'm going to take a look at that language. I appreciate you bringing that up. And if, if the language is matching the 2024 version versus the 2022 version, then we would ask you to update the documentation in that Student Citizenship Handbook. I didn't recall the, the Title IX part getting updated, because I think it just, I thought that it just referenced the policy itself. That's typically what we've done in the Student Citizenship Handbook.
There is language in the handbook itself that is taken directly from that paragraph, that general policy statement.
You got it. And so, if that's, if there's, if there's a difference that would make the Student Citizenship Handbook enforcement different, then we would bring that back.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Jeff?
So, as long as Jenny, from what you're seeing, that, because it was pointed out that some, a couple, it looks like they were contradicting themselves. So, based on what the discussion is here, Jenny, are you kind of okay with checking into that? Make sure they, they don't contradict each other? I mean, they shouldn't contradict each other.
Well, if Dr. Hill, if what Dr. Hillman says is right, that, then, you know, they'll go back and bring those changes to us, you know, then I don't see a problem. Right, then I don't see a problem.
Okay.
And remember, I think the other part, this is a great example of talking about how different parts of the district's governance align with each other. So, the policy is really what governs the entire component of this, right? The Student Citizenship Handbook references the policy. So, once the policy changes, that's what supersedes the rest of the items in the district. Now, the Student Citizenship Handbook does have the weight of policy, but the Student Citizenship Handbook could not override adopted board policy. So, it, when we look at that change, we'll update that and bring that back to you, because we do have the board update, or, you know, approve the Student Citizenship Handbook. But anything in between, it's been very clear, the federal court said that the 2024 rules are vacated, and that any further investigations under that policy would need to go through the 2020 rules. And our, and in this case, it would be the 2022 policy.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else comments on this item? All right. Then I move to approve Policy 522, recommending reverting this policy to the 2022 version with all the forms in handbook language being updated. Is there, can I get a second on that? Second. Second by Maggie. Okay, we've had some discussion, and so we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 7B, motion passes. Okay, we're on to item nine, our items for information. We have a construction update, construction update number six.
Yeah, in the packet, I've just included the latest update for the construction process, and there really is not a lot to report. We're committed to giving you a document each time, but when there's less to report on, we're just going to let that report stand.
We have item B is our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Vote of Concurrent. Dr. Hillman, do you want to share about that?
Yeah, so Director of Instructional Services Hope Langston and one of our family engagement navigators, or our indigenous, excuse me, our Indigenous Cultural Liaison, Sybil Betzinger reported to you in the last six weeks or so, talking about the activities of the Indigenous Parent Advisory Committee. One of the requirements that the state has is for that committee to complete an annual vote on compliance, or it's an annual compliance vote on concurrents or non-concurrents, and we are required to share this at a public meeting. And so, that committee has voted, a vote of concurrents, which means they believe that the school district's programming is meeting the needs of their students. And so, this is a state requirement, and we just have it in the packet as an item for information.
Very good. Any questions or comments at this time? Okay, item 10 is our future meetings. Those are Monday, March 10th, 6:00 p.m. in this boardroom. Tuesday, March 11th, also 6:00 p.m. in the Northfield High School Auditorium. Our Priority-Based Budget Process Public Input Meeting. Monday, April 14th is a regular board meeting in the boardroom here, and then Monday, April 28th, 6:00 p.m., another regular board meeting. That is all the business that we have tonight. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, moved by Jeff, second. Second by Jenny, very good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.